I think we're stable, John.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, all right, like to call the meeting to order if we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the public. Stand.
My nation.
Under God. Invisible. Liberty, justice for all.
For all.
Okay, so we'll work down our agenda. We have the approval of minutes for April 16th, 2021 and May 5th, 2021. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yeah.
Have any questions or comments? Okay, I guess we could do them individual motions. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 16th, 2021, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Julia?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Kristen? Did she say aye? Sorry. Aye, okay, all right, and Shannon, aye.
Aye.
Thanks. And then we have minutes of May 5th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Julia?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And Kristen?
Aye.
And Shannon, aye. Okay, and the person has laughed, so my noise level will go down now. And now we have comments from the public. Just want to remind everybody that we ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes and refrain from airing grievances with individual members of the school community. Give chance, people a chance to raise their hands if they want to add any comments before the beginning of our reports and discussions. See. I don't see any hands yet. Okay. Okay, we do have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for public comment. So seeing no hands raised, I guess we'll move to the next agenda item to our reports for the school committee. Dr. Antonucci.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody. Just very kind of like literally very briefly, because I want to be talking a lot later. Just a couple of things, kind of good news stuff. We, Mr. Donovan can attest to this, but we had our senior formal last Thursday night at Gillette. Can't officially call it a prom this year, but by every account, it was an amazing night for the kids. And I think I had mentioned that it was going to happen. There was just one more step towards semi-normalcy and really a step in the right direction. And you know, these kids have missed a lot of milestones over the last, you know, year plus. So to allow them to have that this year was, I just think tremendous. So that went off without a hitch. And thank you to everybody who kind of made that happen. The other thing is that just about an hour ago, the state updated their graduation guidance. And Mr. Donovan will be sending out some notifications tomorrow, but we have an outdoor graduation. And so for outdoor graduations, the new guidance says that attendees, there's no social distancing, there's no masking. And so it really, it's again, one step closer to normal. So it's really good news, no capacity limits. So we're really going to be able to have a traditional Duxbury High School graduation on June 5th, you know, just about. So there'll be some nuances, of course, with every bit of guidance. But again, I just think we're coming out of the fog here and it's all good signs. And the final piece, I'll say, related to that is, this is, I think, the first week maybe since September, where we've had zero cases of positive cases in the district. So knock on wood, but again, we're not unlike what's happening in the rest of the state, but we're trending in the right direction and getting one step closer. And the other message from the state today on a conference call was that, you know, next year in September, it appears that school is basically going to be normal. With the exception, they're still talking about maybe requirements for masking. So we'll get more information, you know, throughout the summer months, I'd imagine. But beyond that, distancing and access to space and all that stuff that's restricted us this year, it should be a pretty normal school year. The masking, we'll have to see what happens, but they're working with the state's medical team. And that's it for me, and I'll be back later to talk about goals. So thank you.
Great news. Thank you, Dr. Antonucci. Next, Dr. Clenham.
Hey, everyone. I just wanted to share that we had our last school wellness advisory council meeting last Monday, I think it was. And I'm going to be going to be following up by sending a family survey out seeking input from our families to see if there's an interest in us running any social emotional learning or anxiety events or anything that would help support our families at home. So basically, parenting topics or working with students that have particular needs. So look out for that in the next couple of weeks, because we'll be planning a couple of after-school or evening events like we did with the Lynn Lyons anxiety presentation this past year. And also, I just wanted to share that I'm sure many members of our community are aware, but that now that students age 12 and up are eligible for vaccines, the Marshfield Fairgrounds are allowing residents of Duxbury to do drive-up. So they said that no 12-year-olds should be driving their own car. However, if parents or guardians for students that are under 18 can accompany them, they're able to go get a drive-up vaccination. And there's forms available on the Marshfield website if anyone wanted to fill that out ahead of time. But I thought that was convenient and good news for any families that are looking for a convenient way to vaccinate some of the younger members of their family.
So no appointment, just?
No appointments.
No appointments necessary. Okay.
That's it for me.
That makes it easy.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. And so next is Ms. Blake.
Hi, everyone. I just have a few brief updates for you tonight. First, in alignment with the adoption of our amended signature policy, I wanted to bring to your attention. We had one invoice warrant that was processed since our last school committee meeting. And that was warrant number 46, and the warrant date was May 14th, 2021. And the warrant total was $430,000, eight, $43859.81. I also wanted to bring to your attention tonight that we are currently in the process of wrapping up an audit on our student activity accounts. And just as a reminder, in January of last year, we reviewed the student activity account policy, which is policy JJA, in which we made the minor adjustment to have external audits performed every three years on these accounts. So in conjunction with our audit on the end-of-year report that we submit to the state, we also had Powers and Sullivan review our student activity accounts this year. And so as they're just in the process of wrapping up that audit, I will be able to provide a copy of the draft audit reports and findings to you at the meeting in June. And I also just wanted to mention, kind of as a preview to those audit findings, that in the audit notes that I had the opportunity to review already, there are some recommendations for some additional language and clarification in our existing policy. Might be an item that we could have looked at by the policy subcommittee. And just my last update, just briefly, wanted to mention to you that I also met with the town's finance director and the town accountant, and we're starting to work on revisions to our town and school's shared cost agreement. So as you are all already aware, we've recently had the addition of the chief technology officer, who will be working for both the town and the school. So we're currently just working on updating the agreement to reflect the changes in that cost allocation. And so I would anticipate that I'll be presenting the updates early next fall so that we can reflect the correct allocations in the fiscal year 21 end-of-year report.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Blake? Okay, and next we have our student representative, Jake.
Nothing major from me, just like a quick update was that over the past like few weeks, the students have been really busy. We just hit MCAS for English and math, which was two weeks ago for English, and then this past week was math, and that was over the span of four days, two days each week. And then this week, a lot of upperclassmen are completing their AP exams, which has been a very, very busy week for them. That's about it.
That time of year, right?
Exactly.
Congratulations on getting MCAS behind us for the year. That's good. Okay, and then I guess the chair report is next. I just have a few quick items, and then I'll also ask, I think, a couple of other members have comments that they can make too. So I just want to say thank you to the members for completing the training that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. We're all set with our open meeting law conflicts of interest training. So we're updated on that. I also forgot to say thank you at the last meeting, so I just want to say thank you to the Duxbury Interfaith Council for hosting the community gathering on May 2nd and inviting the school committee and school administration to participate. Very much appreciate that event. I was going to congratulate seniors on their event at Gillette. Dr. Antonucci, I covered that. And a huge thank you to the town for their support, the school budget at the town meeting this past Saturday. It was a, it was a good, a good meeting and really appreciate the clear support from the broader community. And then wanted to highlight the fact that the school committee is going to be meeting again for a special meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 PM for what we're calling a listening forum. So basically, there's no agenda topic except to listen to feedback from the community. And the Zoom for that meeting has been distributed by the school and will be posted on the town calendar where our agendas are usually posted. And I think it probably will go out in the newsletters again. Is that, are we going to try and get it out in the school newsletters early next week? Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Great, okay. And then that was it. I had a question for the new policy subcommittee, but I don't know if Matt or Julia want to give a little bit of an update. I was just going to ask if we maybe could put that on the agenda for the next meeting that we have that as a get an update on how we're prioritizing, including, for example. Oh, so Katie just mentioned another one that she wants to include. And then I think also I'd like to ask that policy JEB entrance age be put on the list for consideration. And then, you know, however you guys are handling your, the subcommittee work, I don't know if we kind of prioritize it as a committee once you guys have a fully developed proposal or list or so. That was.
I think our, our agenda, I don't know, Matt, if you want to talk to this point, but our agenda for our first meeting on Monday is to look at the public comments wording that we have for our school committee meetings and also to review a new policy for subcommittees of the school committee, because we don't have one. And so we're going to look at the MASC model policy and other school districts policies. And then we're going to have a discussion about what our plan is going forward. So we'll have more information after Monday.
Correct.
So Julia, would you rather us wait until we get your update on whether, like on what policies we feel are important to kind of look at?
No, I think you could feed those to us at any point. I don't think.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, yes. And that goes for administrators as well to Mrs. Blake's point that when their policies are rising that, or you come into contact with an issue that isn't settled well by our policies, then that's something obviously the policy subcommittee should, should be, you know, put in touch with. And so we'll work on that. If that's okay. I'd rather have it be an informal kind of process than have anything too formal.
Okay. And just so that I do it right, I should just send to one of you, or can I send it to both of you, like an email, or do I need to voice it in a meeting?
I think the best thing to do would be to send it to Shannon as the chairman.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
And just, and don't include, just list the policies, don't include any opinion or thoughts or, right? Because all that is what we need to do in the open meeting discussion.
Okay.
It's okay for you to kind of logistically say, these are the ones that I think should be considered.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And could I add though, because I, context is important. So we can't go down a rabbit hole not knowing why, why you might want to look at a policy. So can it be, I want to review this policy because X, Y, and Z?
Because, yeah, factual, right? X, Y, Z factual, but not Kristen's kind of weighing in on what she thinks.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear. So the context would be really important, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fine. But right, because I am going to provide it to Julia and Matt. So then you have a chain there. So we just have to be very, very careful that we're not providing our own individual opinions.
Right, you're not deliberating, you're just.
Exactly. Yep, yeah.
It might make sense. I mean, the next meeting is just in a couple of weeks. If we were to add what we accomplish over the, in our, in our first, what we'll call policy subcommittee meeting that Julia just described. Like she said, I mean, one of the big sort of items on that agenda is to come up with a framework and a policy to have a policy subcommittee in and of itself. So I think it might make sense in our next meeting to go over the results of our discussion of that meeting, because if we add that to the agenda, I would say then we'd be prepared to give some, for lack of a better word, sort of like the ground rules on how the policy subcommittees will operate. And as part of that explanation, Kristen and others, I think then you'll have some better sort of context on how to make requests and everything. So I would actually recommend not to, not to make a bunch of policy, like policy requests right now, unless it's really time urgent, because then in our next meeting, we can have like fuller explanation on what we came up with around the subcommittee, you know, around, around subcommittees themselves. Do you know what I mean? Like, we'll be able to give like better ground rules on like what we've accomplished. And then I think that will help us to be able to answer more questions around like what the, you know, what the sort of the guidelines should be for making requests for different policies and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, 100% agree that you guys should be providing a report at the next regular scheduled meeting. That, I mean, that was kind of.
Yeah, because it's, because it's like this, this, this agenda is kind of a mishmash in a certain way, because like we're, we're coming up with a policy for public comment, but then we're also coming up with a policy about policy subcommittee.
Right.
So let's like have a better informed discussion around what we decided on for the policy subcommittee. And let's introduce that in the next meeting, because then we can sort of, it, it just makes more sense then to just open the door and say, okay, here's how we'll request policies. Here's the context that we have to be given. Here are the reasons that I have to be given, that sort of thing.
Yeah, I also, just Matt, I completely appreciate that. I just think if, if people have something top of mind and just want to make sure that it's kind of on the overall list of priorities in terms of which ones you're looking at, you know, fair enough to send that. I don't think that impacts the process that you guys are developing. Yeah. Yeah.
No, and our, the subcommittee policy will be the subcommittee policy for whatever subcommittee we, the school committee might want to form. So whether it's around policy development or I don't know, whatever, you know, personnel or, well, that wouldn't be appropriate. But you know, whatever topic you might want to form a subcommittee around this policy will be applicable, so.
Great, okay. Okay, so before we move on to our discussion items, I just wanted to see if any other member has any items that they'd like to guess. Kelly, she got her hand up first.
So in regards to the open meeting law training that we did, this one thing jumped out at me, and I wanted to bring it in front of everybody, because to me, it's confusing. It said, if a member of a public body sends an email to a quorum of a public body expressing his or her opinion on a matter that could come before the body, this communication violates the law even if none of the recipient's response. So that's basically just the opinion thing, right? You can't give your opinion on anything. But it's not like somebody from the public sending us an email saying, this is what should be on the agenda.
Right, no. And we can do logistical things. Remember, I think Mr. Kuchar addressed that, that we can do, like, you can send meeting items. And even if there's a disagreement about what should be on the agenda, as long as we're not saying our personal opinion about
Any opinion.
Think about the agenda item, but just say, I want it on, I want to vote. We could actually do that by email, as long as you're not weighing in on what you think about the agenda item.
Okay, because sometimes we do that, like we'll, we'll, I'll respond to everybody 516, like the date that you can go to.
Right, that's totally, that's totally fine.
deliberation about, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then the other thing that I just thought was interesting, it says, one thing that jumped out at me, it says, while the public is permitted to attend an open meeting, an individual may not address the public body without permission of the chair. An individual may not disrupt a meeting of a public body. And at the request of the chair, all members of the public shall be silent. If after clear warning, a person continues to be disruptive, the chair may order the person to leave the meeting. So I just kind of want to put that out there, because I know there've been a bunch of instances this year with school committees and having disruptions like that. Yeah, and then the only thing I was going to say is the DSU is going to put together a DEI task force. And they asked just, you know, whoever wants to be involved. So I'm going to be involved in that, not as a school committee member, but just as, and they're probably going to change the name. It's not going to be DEI, but it's going to be something along those lines with kids who attend the DEI. So I mean, the DSU.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kelly. And Kristen?
So I I wasn't able to really comment on the curriculum review a couple of weeks ago when we had it on the reading and writing, but I had sent an email to the curriculum coordinators, Ms. Benoit, Ms. Bain, Ms. Milner, and I CC Danielle in it. And I just feel like, I feel very strong and passionate about it. So I really wanted to share some of the things that I put in the email with the school committee. So I'm going to read just like bits and pieces of it and just talk about it a little bit. And so that maybe we can just have a conversation a little bit about it. But I was very concerned to hear Ms. Bain's report, that vocabulary was limited by the high school students, stated in the presentation, limited vocabulary in terms, limits reading ability and readiness for some students. I just feel like that's the foundation for education. And how can our children fully access any curriculum if they're lacking in the area of vocabulary? So basically, I was just asking, what are we missing in the younger grades, foundational grades, that is leading to this limited vocabulary? So I had gone through the actual report and just wrote down a series of questions for each of the different schools. And my main point was, is there data? Do we have data to show where our kids are now, where they were before, just trends, overall trends? And just a way that we can tangibly track. I know with everything that happened this year, there's probably even more issues that we are now having. But in the middle school, I know one of the issues, or one of the things that they were looking at getting was the ability to level students in the middle school. Again, they wanted to have more of an alignment of curriculum instruction in writing vocabulary. In Alden, I really liked a lot of Mrs. Benoit's questions and under areas of weakness, she wrote, there needs to be more consistency again between the grades in school. So my question was like, how can this be achieved? She asked for more specific professional development. She asked for a literacy coach. And Chandler, I was looking for how effective is our dyslexia screening tool? Do we need a better one? Or is it an older version? Like, what are we missing from these older or younger, younger grades? How are the programs that we're using? We have several of them. Is the, is the fact that we have so many different programs causing difficulty for the children to learn some foundational skills? So I, the points that I took from it is that they were looking for a literacy coach, that my question was, do we need a data coach to help us track where the kids are and how they can progress? How effective is the Lucy Hawkins program? I know we've received emails and people have reached out to me directly about current research that's out there stating concerns regarding the program and how effective it is in teaching reading. So I just feel like as a school committee, we really need to have our finger on the pulse on this and be a little more involved. And I definitely had, I was excited that we did this so that it could show areas where we need strength, where we need to improve. But I guess like, I don't want to see it taking a year to get that improvement. I feel like this is very important that we address. So I look forward, Danielle responded that they were going to just need some time to get some of the data together to show me. And I appreciate them taking the time to do that. I know I asked like 50 questions in there, but I just feel we need something a little bit more tangible. So I definitely wanted to share with you. I wish I could have just CC'd everyone in on the email, but I know I'm not allowed. So I figured I presented this way. So thank you, everybody, for your time.
So Kristen, I just respond and wondering why, why you wouldn't have sent that to the superintendent, because our policy, BHC, requests that all school committee members communicate with, they communicate with staff, they send their communications through the superintendent. So.
Because they said during their meeting, they said, if you have any questions, let us know. So I took that as, I was able to ask them that.
Yeah, I think it's probably worthwhile following the policy regardless of what encouragement you might get in a school committee, you know, from a staff member. But you know, if you have an issue with that policy, we can obviously review it. But I think that that might be, might be useful to follow it going forward.
I didn't really have an issue with, I, oh, okay, I've read that policy, Julia. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, but Kristen, thank you for sharing. I think, you know.
Oh, my gosh. I just feel like there's, fine, well, then I, I could read the whole thing if you want. I just feel like it's, okay.
So thank you for sharing. I think that's, I appreciate the input. I think that it was just a minor, you know, clarification that we're all still kind of working through. You know, the rules and the policies, so. Okay, anybody else have any items? Okay, so changing topics completely, we're going to go to one of my favorite events and presentations of the entire year, which is the Duxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council Presentation of Excellence in Teaching Award. I'm going to ask Dr. Antonucci to move over, I think, six folks, right? So this just might take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, give me a minute.
Hi, Duxbury CPAC.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, good.
We can.
I'm here.
Give me one second.
Okay.
Oh, we're going to, we're moving to two screens on my computer. Oh, dear.
I think we're all in the names that were given to me. So let me just make sure, Jen Mazur, Allison Keough, Betsy Hans, Lauren Uproot, Kyle Polacek, apologize if I mispronounce that name, and Georgiana Spalakis, I think she's in. All right, are we all in? Think so, okay.
Great. So Jen and Allison, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, first, I wanted to say good evening to everyone. My name is Allison Keough. I, along with my counterpart Jen Mazur, are the co-chairs of the Duxbury Special Education Parents Advisory Council. We first want to thank the school committee for having us tonight, and also a separate thank you to Shannon for accommodating our request to be on this May agenda in order to announce the recipients of the Duxbury CPAC's Excellence in Education Award. The Excellence in Education Award is different from other recognition programs, in that it is designed to recognize an individual who exemplifies the practice of including and educating all students regardless of disability. Parents were asked to reflect on individuals who interact with their child every day and nominate that. and nominate that person that can and will make a lasting impact on them.
Thanks, Allison, uh, each year we receive many heartfelt submissions, which makes it very difficult for the board to select a winner. Due to COVID and the interruption of learning last year, Heather Tucker and the Duxbury Special Education Department graciously allowed us to select two winners this year. So we are very proud to announce that Ms. Elizabeth Hints, nominated by Kyle Polacek and Ms. Laura Nuprud, nominated by Georgiana Spiliakas, are this year's CPAC Education Award winners. We're extremely thankful to all the individuals who submitted nominations, it is very clear how our teachers make a huge impact on the children and family in Duxbury. Um, I'm not sure if they're muted, but Kyle and Georgiana would like to read their submissions for the award.
All right, I will go first then, my name is Kyle Polacek, my daughter Esme is a freshman at the high school and part of the special ed program, and I think this is, uh, I can only imagine what this year has been like for all of you as well as us as parents, so this is one of the nicest things really to be able to do this year, and I want to say a special thanks to CPAC for even making this possible. Um, because certainly it's nice to spend some time talking about where there is good in our community and in our schools and some of the amazing work that these teachers are doing for our children, so thank you, and thanks for giving us time tonight to share what we had to say. So, um, Ms. Hints is who we nominated, she is Esme's core teacher. Certainly, there's a whole team that gets involved with Esme, but, um, we wanted to nominate her, so. This year, Esme entered her freshman year of high school, having spent the last three years in middle school and with a familiar team headed up by Shelley Thomas. She had some anxiety about making the shift, which was exasperated, exasperated by COVID. Like Esme, we were worried about her transition and how she would handle the change. As for any student, entering high school is a big deal. The transition to high school has been smooth and a success, and we have been so happy to have Ms. Hints as our partner and Esme's core teacher. The below are just a few examples from the year, but I think exemplify how she demonstrates the criteria for excellence in education and why she should be considered. Early on, Ms. Hints identified that one of Esme's classes was not fulfilling her needs and supporting her learning. She proactively reached out, described her concerns and what she believed to be the challenges with the course. She also provided a recommendation of what she felt would be more appropriate. Following this discussion, we took Ms. Hints' recommendation and made the change. It was during this early interaction that we expressed to her that we felt this was an important partnership and would always welcome her input. Um, the next example had to do with student council. Esme had mentioned to me that she was interested in student council, or as she refers to, student counselor. Um, it started last summer, uh, at first, and if I'm honest, I didn't fully pay attention to her request. Once school started though, she continued to mention it, and it got me thinking that maybe she could participate in some way. I reached out to Ms. Hints and explained the situation, and she said she would follow up. Ms. Hints went to Melanie Lamine, who heads up StuCo, and who also has been wonderful through this year. And they arranged for Esme to become a member, which has included things like attending bi-weekly evening meetings, helping with decorating, distributing things, and opportunities to secure donations for student council events. They proactively coordinate things so that she can participate, from teachers to students, supporting her. And they always let me know when something is coming so that she will not miss out. This experience has been so enriching to Esme and has given her a level of confidence and created a feeling of belonging. As a result of this, Esme has joined Unified Bachi and is, um, I did write, because at the time she was getting ready for track, but they're well underway with their second meet today against Hangum. Again, we have been made aware of these opportunities through Ms. Hints, and she now has the confidence to try new things because of her experience with student council. The next example was about styles of learning. On Wednesdays, when we were still doing remote, um, we had take-home work, and I discovered that Esme was having trouble with money exercises, in particular with amounts that were less than a dollar. I write notes to Ms. Hints if we have any challenges, and this is an area that I have been communicating with her on. Based on my notes, I saw that one week she provided Esme with some new visual cues to help her understand. When the challenge persisted, she then created a shading technique as well as a handheld tool that she could use. These techniques that I have discovered each week in the packet tell me that Ms. Hints is not only reading my comments, but is also taking the time to think of ways to help Esme overcome these challenges she is having with these exercises. Money will be something Esme will need to understand in the real world, and this care and commitment to supporting her learning makes me feel that she is being supported and looked after when in school. Not all goes smoothly in life or in school, and there are times when Esme has had challenges navigating social or emotional moments. Ms. Hints has been there to help her in figuring out how to address situations, as well as when we have reached out with questions, she has always provides us with input and guidance. We value being able to do that, and again, feel we have a strong partnership with Ms. Hints that allows us this open line of communication. The above are only some of the examples from this year, but I think hit upon all nine criteria. Special ed has challenges under the best of circumstances, and when I think about these kids being remote last year and then making the transition to high school this year, it was absolutely scary. But in the end, it has been a great freshman year for Esme. While it takes the entire team that supports her to make it happen, the team cannot be forgotten. I could not let this opportunity go by without recognizing Ms. Hints. So from Esme and the Polacek family, we want to say thank you to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, and it goes both ways, it's, it's a partnership, and you're, you guys are great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Is Georgiana on?
She's trying to unmute herself.
I'm sorry, hi, I was trying to figure out how to unmute, I should have had Luke showed me again.
I'll do this way.
Um, thank you for letting us read this today, and, uh, Ms. Laura, actually, Luke had a question, he wanted to know if you get a Big Girl Gold Trophy that says best teacher ever. He was really hoping that that's what the award is.
Got a beautiful plaque, and I'll bring it and show it to him next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Laura has truly been a game changer for my son Luke, he was super frustrated with his writing, very discouraged that it wasn't coming out on paper as he had it in his mind. He was working so hard with minimal results, then he started working with Ms. Laura. She has been nothing short of incredible with my son and with me. She's always available for any questions or concerns that I've had, always with a timely response. She makes sure that both my husband and myself are involved with the plan for Luke's learning. This year has been quite different than the norm, and she's been inventive and helped Luke to adapt to new ways to learn and improve while simultaneously making it fun for him. From remembering an obstacle course that she had to make at home last year, to incorporating animals into his work whenever she can, just because he loves them. She keeps him interested, excuse me, in learning and improving, she engages him in a way that's truly special. It's a wonderful feeling to know that an educator really gets your child, and beyond that, she truly enjoys him. She's genuine in her dealings with all of us, there's never been a time that I ever thought she was just doing her job. It's always been her going above and beyond for Luke, she's made sure that he has all the support he needs, and he's improved beautifully in this past year with her. He responds to her in a way that I haven't seen before, and this is a child who loves everybody, so that's really saying something. I can't think of a better example of somebody that embodies excellence in education.
Thank you, Georgiana. Thank you, Luke. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank, thank the families and the teachers, thank you for the nominations and all the hard work. Wonderful.
Is it possible to ask maybe either Jen or Allison to just acknowledge the nominees? I know we have some shining star, um, winners and recipients of the award, but I do, um, think it's just important just to name the other staff, because it was a tight, tight, um, lots of really, uh, spectacular staff that were nominated, and, um,
up right now.
Okay.
Okay, the other nominees were Mary Ann Lincoln, Allison Graham, uh, Verna Kenefick, Karen McKenna, Julie Homel, Nora Hughes, and Amy Burns. And those were all the nominees, including Laura and Elizabeth.
Uh, and thank you to the CPAC for such, uh, um, an acknowledgement of the hard work that the special education, um, staff do every day, day in and day out, and this was just, um, really appreciative, uh, I think on behalf of the special education department and the families, um, for acknowledging that hard work, I think particularly in this past, uh, end of school year and start, and what's going on so far, so thank you so much, and um, I know I'm just really proud of all of the special education staff, the nominees, and, uh, the recipients, so thank you for honoring um, the staff.
Thank you, thank you for your help.
Yes, and thank you for allowing us to have two.
It was necessary this year, it's definitely necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Great, I'm going to put you back, thanks for joining.
Thank you, bye. While you do that, the next item on the agenda will be, um, presentation of twenty twenty, twenty one school improvement plan reports by our school councils.
I'm going to have to bring some folks in, just bear with me while I. I think that I remove, I think I, okay, principals, uh, who's, what's the, I'm sorry, what's the order, I should have known this, Chandler first, or?
Yes.
So I'll bring in, I'll bring in the Chandler, um, sorry, this is harder than it seems. I'm looking for Mr. Picard, okay, here we go, I think it's Picard family.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, and I think Ms. McGuire is going to share her screen, are you ready for me? Okay, I think so. So while she's getting that, I'll just start by saying good evening and thanks for having us tonight. We're glad to be here to share some of our successes for, um, this school year, we have, um, as you can see, some of our, um, school council members with us tonight. And we've shared the entire school improvement plan documents with you, and we're just going to highlight some of our goals tonight and talk through those, but we're happy to answer questions about any of them. So I would like to first, um, introduce Mr. Joseph Picard, who is the co-chair of our Chandler School Council, and he is going to start us off this evening.
Thank you, Erin, um, good evening, my name is Joey Picard, I'm a parent member of the Chandler School Council, um, along with parent members Diane Kilday, Kim Leckie, and Susan Burt, and we're joined by faculty members Mercini Smith, Darcy McDonald, and Sherri Sewell, as well as our community representative Christine Nathan, and most of them are with us tonight, some will be addressing the committee. Um, to say that it's been a challenging year is certainly an understatement with major changes, including virtual learning, the hybrid model, and a return to school transition. Um, each family had a different experience with this, of course, but I think many families have a lot of pessimism about the long-term effects of this major global disruption on these particularly impressionable students. Between the masks, the virtual learning, the changes to lunch and recess, I think there's a lot of fear as how this could ultimately affect the well-being of the students, especially social and emotional health. Me personally, I think there's a strong chance that we now have in our homes and in our schools, the next great generation of Americans and world citizens as they rebound and prove their resilience and their courage and their strength after this pandemic. But that's not to say that this has been easy or trauma-free in the process, and therefore, having a support structure to monitor social, emotional, and behavioral well-being is a critical undertaking for the school and for the district, and as a parent, I'm incredibly proud that this is the first pillar on the improvement plan. You're all familiar with the improvement plan, pillar one's three main goals in a nutshell are to increase social, emotional, behavioral support structures in the school, to embed learning practices into the curriculum, and to maintain that all-too-important goal of having all Chandler School students establish a positive connection with at least one adult staff member. I won't recap each of the action steps to those goals, but will of course reference them as I detail with your permission the evidence that these steps were tackled effectively by the Chandler School administration and staff. So as it relates to the board-certified behavior analyst, the district BCBA supported students with their designated services on their IEPs, their 504s. The BCBA consulted with both staff and families regarding these specific plans for student support. Uh, as it relates to safety care training, Vice Principal Sue McNeil obtained that certification and then conducted the safety care training to designated staff members, essentially training the trainers. And there are now thirteen Chandler staff members who are certified in the techniques, and all staff have had access to strategies, including the highlighted de-escalation techniques. Regarding the goal to provide continual professional development on SEL, the PBIS, and that stands for the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports Team, they met on a regular basis to review the green program to discuss new resources. Uh, the teachers at Chandler all have a resource site, and additional SEL resources were added to that site this year, and it's my understanding that summer work is planned for further development and enhancement. So speaking of that GREN assemblies, which we all love, they were virtual this year, and they were also broadcast to families who are home that scheduled day. Um, there was an action to expand SEL programming by engaging families with resources, and the Chandler School Adjustment Counselor, as well as the school psychologist, and the Alden School Adjustment Counselor, they created videos for families, establishing best practices and research in identified areas of social, emotional learning. Finally, staff meetings and grade-level meetings were used to share successes on a consistent basis. And then for the last goal, it was to examine interpersonal structures and programming. So I just want to report that there were morning and afternoon meetings held in all classrooms throughout the hybrid model, and then virtual meetings did continue for all classrooms that had students in cohort C after the full return in February. Um, in September, there was a school-wide Start With Hello Week, which highlighted skills on how to introduce yourself and make connections with others. And there were small group and whole class lessons that were conducted, which targeted social awareness and self-awareness. Staff meeting time was set aside to have teachers collaborate on best practices for these morning and afternoon meetings. And then lastly, SEL standards were included in progress checks and added to the standard-based report cards, which is an incredible step that allows parents like myself to understand how our children are adapting in these areas, and then in turn to support the teachers and the Chandler staff, and they're all-too-important efforts for the social, emotional health of our little ones. Um, for pillar two, I'd now like to turn it over to my son's amazing kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Smith, I just want to thank you all for your, uh, audience and attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Picard, and my name is Mercini Smith, I teach kindergarten at Chandler. And, um, I'd like to tell you a little bit about pillar two, pillar two focuses on enhancing learning opportunities for all students, and it included two planned actions. The first was to prioritize reading instruction for students with disabilities. And we are excited about the work we've been able to do around reading instruction this year. Six Chandler special educators participated in an Orton Gillingham practicum, as a follow-up to their training during the nine, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Teachers will be completing their coursework and practicum by the end of this school year, and it included working with one to two students weekly for at least two hours using the OG curriculum, Orton Gillingham curriculum. They created weekly lesson plans and learning outcomes, and worked with a mentor from Orton Gillingham who regularly reviewed videos of their teaching and. who regularly reviewed videos of their teaching and lesson plans. And I've spoken to a few of them personally, and they are so excited about how this is going to affect our kids in the future. A second action plan for pillar two was to implement and/or increase digital student engagement and collaboration strategies. Four action steps were planned for this for this step. The first was to provide professional development on digital student engagement and collaboration strategies and tools. District-wide tech camp was offered August 31st to September 4th, and this included some mandatory training on school-wide software such as Seesaw, Clever, and Pairdeck. The staff signed up for a variety of additional training over a course of several days, including, but not limited to Screencastify. You might have heard of Screencastify, EdPuzzle, digital math tools, Savas, Learning at Home, Flipgrid. And all of these tools were designed to increase student engagement and allow for teaching to be maximized in a hybrid or a remote model. Professional development was also offered for all newly implemented tools and educational software, including Reading Eggs, Math Seeds, Science A to Z, Raz Kids, and Seesaw. Cohort C teachers were provided additional training tools such as EdPuzzle and Pairdeck. Digital resource exploration was provided on October 9th, on the October 9th Professional Development Day. The second action step was to provide teachers with iPads and training on how to use them to engage students in learning. And iPad training for all teachers was also provided on the October 9th Professional Development Day. District-created spreadsheets were offered to families and staff to be able to access support on the tools used at each grade level. Educational videos were also shared with families to help support students with technology at home. Finally, a tech integration coach supported teachers with on-demand training, resources, and the opportunity to request virtual training as they needed in the tool they've been provided. And I myself have used the tech coach, and she was very helpful. The third action step was planned for, that was planned for pillar two, was to provide teachers with digital versions of curriculum programs to support remote instruction and learning. Teachers and students have digital access to Elevate Science and Envision Math schoolwide. Kindergarten first grades have a digital social studies curriculum for teachers, and grade one includes a student app. Second grade was given a pilot program for a Savas Social Studies digital curriculum, as well as lessons on iXL. First and second grades have Science A to Z and Raz Plus, which provided a leveled reading library with lessons and assessment opportunities. And the final action to enhance student learning was to facilitate opportunities for teachers to observe and learn best practices in digital learning, such as sharing at faculty meetings and signing up to offer many professional development sessions before and after school. Teachers had weekly planning time all year and collaborated on best practices with digital tools and programs. We shared what we learned often with each other, and we were able to help our families with their children at home as well. So I think, I think this pillar was met its goal. So I think we did a great job. Thank you. And I think that I believe Darcy McDonald, Kim Lecky will be next.
Kim Lecky.
Hi, I am Kim Lecky. I am the parent of a third grader, a first grader at Chandler, and a soon-to-be kindergartner. And I'm going to present to you pillar three. Pillar three is program expansion. And this year, we are proud to have been able to increase student access to our digital programs. Two action plans, the first which I'll share with you was for the district curriculum priorities to be shared with Magic Dragon and the Before and After Dark programs. And so school administrators set out the goal to meet regularly with these other leaders in these programs. They had frequent collaboration between the programs, which led to a successful start in the hybrid model and a successful transition to full return. Directors' meetings were held for planning, for sharing of resources, and for programmatic updates. I know we love the Before and After Dark program, so I'm super excited to see what those will hold for the students in the fall and for the next school year. The second pillar was to, or part piece of the pillar was to explore ways to provide additional opportunities for students in STEAM, computer science, and in programming. There are four pieces I'd like to share with you here. First, students and first graders have had access to the STEM robot, robot, sorry, robot cart to continue lessons in programming and coding. And I know that my kids, when my older son was at Chandler, he loved the robots. Whenever we got to come in on the parent nights, he loved to show those off to us. And I know my first grader enjoys those as well. Chandler also participated in the Hour of Code, which was updated this year with numerous activities so that it could be used socially-distanced and also could be used at home with families. And information for families to access the program was shared in the weekly newsletters. This year, many classrooms, it was optional, but had the ability to set their students up with Codable, which is an online science site or an app that can be downloaded to continue computer science lessons at home. And lastly, this summer, the computer lab will be recreated, and there will be digital use policies and expectations that will be set up to continue to explore ways that students will remain digitally engaged next year. Thank you guys for your time. I'm gonna pass it on to Ms. Darcy McDonald.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So I'll be sharing about pillar four. Pillar four is global learning and community partnerships. We all realize how important our community partnerships were, especially over this past year, as we worked through all the challenges together. First on pillar, on the pillar four school improvement plan is evaluate school-to-home communication yearly in an effort to keep parents informed, increase transparency, and engage the greater community about school district needs and initiatives. And the evidence that we shared for this was weekly newsletters were sent out to Chandler families each Monday morning. The average audience for these emails was about 1,000 readers with an open rate of almost 70%. Google Forms were created for dismissal and absence notifications. Parents have utilized this new form, and it has streamlined the process for the Chandler main office, and I can speak personally, it has made dismissal especially much, much easier. All learning models, learning model changes were presented at school committee meetings throughout each transition of the year. The plans were also sent out to families, along with the video recording of the meeting. Our next action step was to continue with the alignment of the new 2018 History and Social Science Frameworks, which focuses on preparing students to have the knowledge and skills to become thoughtful and active participants in a democratic society in a complex world. The evidence for this consists of, there was some work done for aligning the newest standards with our currently-used resources, which resulted in grade-level shared unit guides for this year. We also modified this for the hybrid model. We had grade-level collaboration time throughout the year, which provided consistency of materials presented in each classroom. And it also allowed for teacher feedback on program resources, which was very helpful because we could really talk about it each time we were using something. Grade two this year participated in a pilot of the Savas My World program. And we reviewed materials for young citizens, which is currently used by grades one, three, and five. And we plan to implement a new grade-two program this coming year. Professional development was given on December 1st. Teachers completed a SWAC, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges for all current social studies programs, and reviewed the social studies justice standards. The subcommittee will survey teachers on the satisfaction of their current programs and resources towards the end of the year, and the subcommittee presentation created for the school committee after an informal review year. Thanks so much for letting me come.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the help from our school council this year in presenting our school improvement plan. And we are happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, given the year that we've had, you know, to hear all these positive things that have been going on and all the efforts that have been going on, it's just, it's a real pleasure and kind of affirmation of all the hard work that's been done. So I just, I want to thank everybody. And I'll open it up to questions from the committee. If anybody has any.
I have one question. Just for the program expansion for STEAM, I didn't hear the art piece, the A. So I didn't know if anybody could comment on that.
Um, so yes, we definitely, that was one of the goals that we were sort of limited in completing this year, only because, you know, we didn't have opportunities for kids to be moving around. So our plan of completing that and having a lot of science, technology, engineering, art, and math, all, you know, connected into one, wasn't like fully accomplished. It's definitely something we talked about as a school council that we need to expand into next year for sure.
Well, and I just, art is very therapeutic for kids and coming out of COVID, you know, art therapy and in all that, and how it can be transitioned into the STEAM process and help kids with the engineering and science and math.
And we did have, we did have opportunities for kids to be participating in, you know, artistic outlets while they were home in hybrid and, you know, through technology, our art teacher Beth Caffrey had created a virtual art room. But to say that it was really in the STEAM element would kind of be a stretch, but we were definitely, we're definitely conscious of that, and we'll be working on it in the future, too.
I was just gonna ask, I've heard, this is not the first time I've heard teachers say how valuable the grade-level collaboration has been this year. And my understanding is it was happening, that was the Wednesday afternoon activities. So I was wondering how that was gonna carry forward next year.
You know, I think that, you know, speaking just for Chandler, I think that, you know, we will go back to the model next year of having monthly grade-level meetings and having, you know, common planning times for pockets of teachers, as we always have. It's really difficult to get 10 teachers together at the same time. But what I will tell you is that the teachers have found real value in working together, as you said. And, you know, I've heard a lot of teachers just anecdotally saying that they really want to continue doing the doing, you know, teacher planning together as a whole grade level, because it really just helps all of them to share ideas and to collaborate in that way. So I think, you know, we'll try to be creative next year with less plant, common planning time, but definitely try to continue the practice of having everybody being collaborative for the curriculum for sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Transition to Alden. All right, let me do some removing and adding, okay?
This is what makes me want to get back to in-person meetings. Right? The ability to kind of like socially chit-chat in between, say thank you to everybody and kind of acknowledge, it's hard to do that on Zoom.
Okay, so I moved, and I need to add, give me a sec. I think I think we have everybody here. Chase, do we have?
So you're ready for me?
I believe so. Let me just double-check. Yeah, I think we're good.
All right, sounds good. Hello, Duxbury School Committee and Duxbury friends. My name's Chase, and I am pleased to present some of the results from our school improvement plan. I have some of my friends on the Alden School Council. I have co-chair Amy Flynn here, as well as Nancy Ruffo and staff representatives Kim Orevak and Anna Nukem, and thank you to the four of them so much for coming today and talking about some of our work here at Alden School. And I think we're gonna start with Ms. Oh, talking about pillar one.
Is the emotional well-being.
Kim? Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt. You have a really bad signal. I don't know why.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, that's a little better, actually.
Let me, let me move my. Okay.
That's better.
You put your video off, and it's so much better.
All right, hold on one second. I apologize. All right, let me see. Is this any better?
Crystal clear. Thank you, Kim. Yeah.
Oh. So I will start again. I'm sorry. Recognizing that the school year is going to be like no other, we intentionally implemented best practice. In it all in school, at the beginning of each day, in morning meetings. When we were hundred students virtually through this. More meetings.
So sorry, it's really bad again.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
I can speak on pillar one if we want to just kind of switch over.
Sorry, Kim.
Don't worry about it, Kim. Poor Kim is gonna be stressing out. It's all right, Kim. I'm gonna, I'll pinch hit on this. So what, what Kim had been talking about is talking about pillar one and the social, emotional well-being of students, and we, we worked this year to implement best practices around social, emotional well-being. Students participate in morning meeting each morning with their classroom teacher, along with our remote students during our hybrid time. During hybrid, those students join through Zoom, and then our remote students in Cohort C continue to join morning meetings with our homeroom to this day. We also extended our weekly announcements to a new platform style. Really, they're like our, we stopped doing our regular daily morning announcements in favor of fewer interruptions in the classroom, particularly with with remote students voting in it kind of at different times. We were finding that we were getting the feedback that we were kind of that that was a bit, it could be, could be an interruption. So we moved it to more of a weekly announcement platform where we have something we called the Alden News Network, or we've renamed it that. And so we've been putting out something called the Weekly Report, featuring students announcing dragon deeds for the week, birthday recognitions from Alden School's favorite puppet, Grandpa Mortimer, and other school announcements and reminders. And all of those videos are housed on our YouTube channel, and we put them out on our Instagram accounts and Facebook, as well as our, I changed our homepage so that they're posted right on there, too. And then the last thing we'll talk about with social, emotional well-being and pillar one. We've had over 125 Instagram posts cross-posted to Facebook and Twitter with our hashtag Alden Family this year that feature dragon deed photos, students holding up their dragon deed stickers from Assistant Principal Mr. Coslin, our newsletters, important school and community announcements, anything sort of, you know, pressing or or even just routine, everything gets kind of cross-promoted and branded. And we feel like that's made, that's helped to form a more cohesive community feeling in our school, despite our sort of difficult circumstances beginning of the year, sort of separate and fractured. And we think that's gone a long way. So that's what we're talking about with pillar one. And I'm going off the top of my head because I don't have that screen up. I, is it? Is Amy talking about pillar two?
I'm pillar two.
Oh, my bad, Anna Nukem. Thanks, Anna.
That's okay.
Thanks, Anna.
No problem. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm Anna Nukem. I'm a fifth-grade special education teacher at Alden. So I'll be talking about pillar two, advancing learning opportunities for all students during the week of professional development at the end of August and at our district-wide PD Palooza training event. There were roughly 70 sessions that were offered that allowed teachers to learn more about digital student engagement tools and collaboration strategies. Many of these tools and strategies can be seen being implemented daily at Alden School such as Flipgrid. The Google Workspace for Education Tools, Vocabulary, Jamboard and Pardeck, just to name a few. In addition, collaborative planning time at each grade level has allowed teachers. To share with each other their successes integrating these digital practices and resources. In addition, we purchased remote versions of several curriculum programs such as Lucy Cawkins Virtual Units of Reading. The Foundation's Fun Hub and the Empowering Writers Hub. And lastly, Savis provided us with digital access to their social studies materials. We purchased the Nice from Young Citizens Curriculum for Grade Five Social Studies, which also has an online component. And I will pass it over to Amy Flynn for pillar three. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Anna.
Hi, I'm Amy Flynn. I am a parent of four kids, a seventh grader, a fifth, third and first grader, and I'll be talking about pillar three, which is the program expansion. So all grade three teachers have fully implemented foundations this year. Foundations is a phonics program for grades K through three, which is also used at Chandler School. It provides the important phonics instruction needed to close the continuum for primary grade students. We partnered with the Teaching Learning Alliance to provide multiple coaching rounds and professional day presentations and best practices. And phonics instruction, grammar and word work. They focused on phonics in grade three and grammar and intermediate word work in grades four and five. Additionally, we have purchased Haggerty Phonemic Awareness and Bridge the Gap programs. Which have begun using with our intervention groups and are looking forward to including in our classroom setting as well beginning next year. The important work ensures that our readers workshop model is robust and includes all five necessary components of reading instruction. As highlighted in the Science of Reading research. Phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. And now Nancy Ruffo will do the global learning and community partnership.
Thanks, Amy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Ruffo. I'm on staff at Alden and I also have a fifth grader, a seventh grader and an eighth grader. As mentioned by Mr. E, we have worked this year to increase the frequency of our social media posts by curating. Photos, videos and other media from around the school community. By tagging all of these photos with the Alden Family hashtag, we have been able to feature and promote our school in new and exciting ways. Secondly, the nature of this school year required us to rethink how families notify us about dismissals and absences. Gone are the days of paper notes being brought to the main office at Alden School. In collaboration with our main office staff, we have incorporated paperless dismissal forms through Google Forms. That allow for families to easily communicate important dismissal and attendance information with our administration. That concludes the presentation on Alden School. If you have any questions.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you. Open it up, questions from the committee? No questions?
Good job, everybody.
All right, fantastic. Great job, everyone. Thank you so much for coming and presenting tonight. And all the hard work over the last year. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to do some moving again here. Okay, Sarah, here we go. Ms. Krishnan is, I think, just came in.
Great. Yeah. Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and get started for the middle school and our school improvement plan. I just want to start by. Introducing our school council members. I have two with me tonight. But it was a, a lot of work through the, the group on a number of items this year and I just appreciate all of their. Collaboration throughout the year in our school council and they include. Parent representatives, Allison Frazier, Melanie Carlberg, Alitha Krishnan, who's joining me tonight. Kristin O'Connell, who is here tonight as well, of course. Christine Sovik. We had two students on the council this year. Tiffany Stracken, who's in grade eight. And Jackson Taylor, who's in grade seven and I'm hopeful he'll continue on as an eighth grader next year. Our community representative is Linda Moriarty and then. I had staff members Deb Burns, Erica Clark, Kitty Drain and Caitlin Sheehan on the council as well. So. We all worked collaboratively on this. And this evening, I'm going to go through. Just some highlights on these pillars and so is Ms. Krishnan, who's going to help me present here. And then at the end, if there's any questions, especially about any of the items that maybe we didn't highlight, we can address those. So on the first pillar, on social emotional wellbeing, we had a number of goals in there, including embedding SEL practices in the curriculum maps. Examining interpersonal structures and our safety and security updates. And I wanted to highlight tonight. Some of the action steps that we took in examining our interpersonal. Structures, especially given the hybrid environment that we faced for the predominance of the school year. We really made a concerted effort as a building to. Think about and implement programming and systems that were going to. Really ensure that our students had a connection with a supportive adult in the building. So we did a number of things in that direction. We did surveys with students and families to identify how connected they were feeling. With the school, especially during the hybrid period. And use that data in the fall to inform adjustments we made to our practices moving forward. We continue to use and last year we had, we began in sort of a pilot format, a mentor program. We, we expanded upon that program this year. Where we would link particular students with an adult in the building. We used a targeted tiered system of support to identify students who might benefit from. Being linked up with a mentor in the building who was not an adult that they would be graded by in terms of academics. So really to just have someone. That could be a support and, and a person they felt connected to in the building. We know that there's a correlation between student success and then. And every student having that adult that they feel connected to in the building, at least one. We created a student academic support block program specifically for our students who are known as FLEP students, which is former. Limited English proficient students. So these are students who are formerly English language learners as, as. As a designation and have gained. Skills in their English proficiency that have allowed them to not need certain services anymore. But students that we find. Still sort of need a little bit of support and check in. And so what we did was we used our ELL teacher in the building. And she became a proctor for that particular academic support group of students. So that they had a space to, to, to go to and a person to check in with. That also could provide just some additional supports in terms of the language acquisition. In terms of the specific academics that they were doing and that was really successful. For our students. And then we also. Were able to leverage our office hour and academic support blocks broadly for one-on-one and small group check-ins. Between students and teachers. So by having the time periods with this additional academic support block that we built into our schedule this year and we will. Continue to have in future years. Our teachers were able to get to students that they needed to provide some interventions in terms of academic support. And students were able to more easily get to their teachers, especially where time before and after school was. Has, has been limited this year and, and we saw a lot of benefits to that. We also, as a building, used. The Wednesday times as staff to have. Team meetings where we are able to assess student progress and then. Target and interventions for students that we felt needed them. By using these times of academic support and office hours through a data-driven process to be able to identify. Who would benefit the most, what are the steps we're going to take and employ those with those students. And make sure those connections were being made. In the second pillar, advanced learning opportunities for all students. I know the other buildings mentioned this as well, but in the hybrid environment, implementing increasing student engagement in a digital environment was just that relevant. So I am going to touch on it as well. You know, as the other buildings mentioned, we did have extensive professional development time at the beginning of the year to support staff implementing. Technology effectively for engagement and student connection in our environment. We also use department and faculty times to prepare for and plan for and collaborate around the hybrid environment. And our teachers. Experienced and then put into practice trainings on Pardeck iPad tools, Padlet. Newzella, any of the Schoology updates, just a really broad variety of tools. There's about 20 listed on, on the document I shared with the school committee. As well. And in addition to that. What we were able to use. At, at, at the middle school or some of our experts locally, as people started to really latch on to a particular tool and use it effectively. We were able to create time and space in our Wednesdays and our department time and in our faculty time for our. Teachers to teach other teachers effective practices even beyond the formal professional development that we had given them, which was great. The third pillar I'll touch on. You know, we, we. We have been working to expand our, our STEAM programming at the middle school. And our action steps this year was to target our Operation Exploration or OpX, as we've been referring to it, course. As well as our STEM courses, which every sixth grader has to take us a portion of the year in STEM. And then seventh and eighth graders can choose to continue on with a semester course in STEM. And so this year, our action steps, we used a grant that we got called the Digital Literacy Grant. In order to train our teachers, two of our teachers. In some tools, including Common Sense Media and CS Discoveries. And those teachers were able to use some of those tools to update their curriculum maps, actually implement those tools into the course curriculum. So for instance. In Operation Exploration, Mr. Wayland, who's, who's taught that and really built that class out. He was able to add seven weeks of programming content around the tool code X, so that students were getting exposed to student programming. Content. And. One area that I, we still need to work on, we had a grand plan to implement. Common sense media units on. Web safety and. You know, appropriate computer use and those kinds of things. Our goal is to implement modules of that into our academic support blocks over the course of a year with a vertical. Alignment of those things. So our students get sort of a broad exposure to these types of topics. In addition to the work they get in their classes. And we, we still need to work on, on that piece. Unfortunately, this year. That, that element of that goal. Sort of took a backseat to the other pieces we were working on with that goal. So that, that will be a next step for us. And then lastly, with this goal. We had hoped to do a STEAM night. Actually, for the past two years, we've been trying to plan an event. Where we could have our students show some of the projects they've been working on. In their science, technology, engineering, art and math classes or STEM classes. And we've wanted to plan this and have not been able to put it into place yet. Something exciting happened this year, though, and that is that I was able to meet with as well as. Kathy Harmon, the science supervisor, and I think Dr. Klingerman, you were there. We were able to meet with DBMS and the Duxbury Beach Reserve and Duxbury Recreation. To collaborate on some future projects. We're trying to build, Island Creek was there as well. We're trying to build out our collaborative projects with these local resources. Our seventh grade has typically done some work with these different resources and we're trying to expand upon that, which was really exciting. And then for standard four on global learning and community partnerships, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Krishnan.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the school council as well. So I'm Lalda Krishnan. I have two boys, one in the sixth grade, one in the ninth grade. And talking about global learning and community partnerships. The thing that Mr. Guay just mentioned about, you know, outreach to, to different groups. That is, is kind of been an ongoing objective for the improvement plan. As has, you know, kind of reaching out via surveys and so on. When this plan was put together about a year ago, we didn't really know that COVID was going to happen. So I'm going to just kind of highlight. How we handled, you know, tactically, the kind of school to home communications. So the big thing that, you know, really. We need to highlight is this kind of comprehensive reopening plan. With both, with, with the three aspects, full in person, hybrid and remote, which was. I can only imagine what kind of a logistical challenge that was. And it was also communicated and raised this other. Item, which is increased engagement in school district events, open meetings. I think when we had our school council meeting, we noted, noted that. We now have more engagement in these types of meetings because the technology allows us to do this versus in person. But of course, you know, the school is, you know, the great strength of, of school is to be in person. So the whole. Back to school. Process that was kind of facilitated, that will continue and. It's great to hear that we should be in normalcy by September. But having said that, we've learned a lot. So what we have is, you know, things like the automated paperless absence that has been mentioned by the other schools, the other buildings. So that, that's where we've really had this kind of baptism of fire. With dealing with all these different technologies, dealing with how we communicate using these technologies. There's ongoing. Progress with using social media, using MailChimp. And I think we've got a lot, I think Mr. E mentioned. Cohesiveness. I think that is going to be ongoing. Where we're going to continue to try to engage with the community, engage with parents and guardians, engage with the wider community. Using these kind of tools. Do, 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 is there anything I missed out? Please do step in, Mr. Guire, if I have missed anything out.
I think that was great.
Yeah, that was, that's it.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think I have the same question for you. Perhaps I have for Mrs. Weisheim, which is. You mentioned the usefulness of the academic support blocks and the team meetings on Wednesday afternoons. And how that was useful for students and for your. Plans around connecting students with. People, adults in the building and targeting interventions. So I was hoping that you could. Help me understand how that's going to continue next year.
Yes, absolutely. So there's sort of two reasons why that was particularly helpful this year. So the first is that. Prior to this year, we didn't have the academic support block. We had two I-Lab periods, if you remember. And so the frequency with which the academic support blocks were, have been occurring this year. Has allowed more of those opportunities where we have all of our kids and all of our staff. With the exception of, of, for a chunk of time, we had staff manning lunch opposite that. But the access was much greater and at a consistent interval to actually. Apply those intervention practices. In addition to the work that they were doing during. in addition to the work that they were doing during the the academic block, like during English class, if that makes sense. At the middle school, we we have always had team meetings. The the challenge for us, and I I don't want to speak for Mrs. Weisheim, but I'm sure it's the challenge for her too, is that whenever we have a group of teachers meet with each other, the kids have to be somewhere else. And so the ability for our teachers of the off-team classes, who are world language teachers, PE, STEM, art, music, to participate in some of those meetings has typically been more limited. And this year, because of those Wednesday time periods, we were able to have everybody be involved. And so the the sort of total effort could happen in a student's full course load, if that makes sense. So you know, in the future, we will have that academic support block. And we're exploring ways that we can leverage that time to expand on those interventions that we've successfully been able to use. And I'm going to continue to look at ways that we can ensure that the right teachers can be at those meetings. Minimally, we we prioritize our teams having common planning time to allow for that. But again, trying to make sure that we have those other teachers who aren't on the immediate team participate. We're going to try to find ways to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Any other questions before we move on to the high school? Okay, thank you for all the hard work.
I think we sorry.
We have to do our transition again.
Excuse me, I'm sorry about that. Okay, Jim, we're all set. Kristin is, I think she was coming in. Yeah, she is. Ms. Rapp, how are you?
I will, how are you?
You're well, good, good.
Wonderful.
All right, Jim.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. And I wanted to start by introducing the members of the high school school council. So we were a wonderful group. Mrs. Rapp is our co-chair, Mrs. Slocum, Mrs. Sovik, Mrs. Bedian and Mrs. Denison, who I believe is in the the audience here this evening. We have two outstanding students, Campbell Johnson and Wes Moran, who's who's just completed three years on the school council and has done just a wonderful job in his time there. We are very fortunate to have a terrific community rep who raised her own kids in the district and was a school administrator in the district before leaving and being a school administrator in another district and whose grandkids are in in the district, Mrs. Wyler, and then three staff members, Miss Coleman, Miss Morrison and Miss Levine. So I wanted to say thank you to all of them. And then as we kind of move forward here, Ms. McGuire, if you can move to the next slide, I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Rapp, who's here with us tonight, because this is her final school council event after eight years in the high school school council. So I'm very grateful for the time that I got to work with her in this role and all of her help and assistance. So I wanted to make sure I had an opportunity to to say thank you to her on behalf of students and staff here at the high school. And so with that, Ms. Rapp, if you'd like to begin.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Hi, everyone. I'm, as as Jim mentioned, I'm Kristin Rapp. I've I've had two sons who've gone through, one's a junior, a rising senior in high school, and one is a a rising freshman, or she's just about to graduate here. Jim and I are going to go ahead and hit, going to go ahead and hit each of the pillars. We'll hit each of the pillars by explaining the goals, and then we had just a couple examples for that. Under pillar number one, the social emotional well-being. The the first goal was to embed social and emotional learning practices into the scope and sequence of curriculum maps across content areas. That was done in two ways. First, the English department evaluated literature for SEL opportunities in the fall, and they have revised the curriculum so that they will be embedded into learning opportunities in the future. The second way that this was implemented was that the school administered the Panorama SEL survey to students, faculty and staff in December and January of this year. And the school council will evaluate that in the fall. Jim?
And you know, similar to what Ms. McGuire said at the middle school with the second one for interpersonal structures and programming, having the opportunity to have the academic support period created some real incredible opportunities for us as a school, as a guidance department and our first student support team to track students and their performance, especially in the hybrid environments, and then be able to we had intervention supports that we hadn't had before. And so we were able to check in and to provide direct support on Wednesday. We had we had lots of, we'll talk about this more later, but we had lots of kids in the building getting one-on-one support from staff. And then we were able to expand that into the academic support periods with actual intervention blocks. And I really want to commend our guidance department, who did a tremendous job this year pivoting and bringing, doing a lot of their guidance appointments and and our site counseling appointments on those Wednesdays. We're having a difficult time getting kids that not want to leave class and did not want to to miss any instructional time. And so they did a lot of work when we were virtual, connecting with kids and families and making sure that we were still able to support everyone as the in the COPSCRAM. Speaks for itself in many ways here. So moving on to the second pillar, preventing learning opportunities for all students.
One of the first goals was to develop pathways for students to advance learning, to maximize college and career readiness. This is something that the high school's been working toward for quite some time. And we're very excited that this was the first year that it launched, it launched its first internship program. Unfortunately, many of the community partners who had signed on to take an intern were unable to do so because of COVID. And this left some of our kids, some of those who were hoping to go work at Magic Dragon or Waterfront Realty without an opportunity to do so. However, we are currently taking applications for next year. So and there is hope that they will be able to to take on those internships next summer, next year.
And Mr. Fowles has done an incredible job building up that program. And it is going to grow into something that was be transformative here at the high school. And for tiered interventions, just an area of focus in the English department, the ELA department, the Norrid Inc. platform, which was a piece of software that we were able to purchase this year with some COVID resources. Really allowed our English teachers to differentiate on a kid-by-kid level. Primarily grammar and some of the primarily our grammar instruction, which had, you know, would normally be done in the classroom in a in a normal school year, those that were shifted into a virtual environment. And Dr. Baines and her staff did a lot of work building up their skill sets with that platform and then became a key platform and resource for our teachers in the intervention in our writing labs, which we'll talk about in our in our next category in program expansion.
And under this pillar, one of our initial goals was to implement writing and math intervention supports and drop-in labs for students nine to twelve. As Ms. McGuire mentioned, the ASP this year was huge for the students. It really gave them some special opportunities. In particular, our EL, excuse me, our ELA in math teachers were able to identify students in need of writing and grammar intervention. And then they provided those interventions during the academic support period, which allowed them to figure out their needs and provide individualized or targeted instruction. So it was a huge success all all around. Excuse me. Also, some kids just were able to use that opportunity to that time just to catch up on their schoolwork, and that was a really nice breathing period for many of the high school students.
And then our freshman academy model or goal this year focused on looking at models, which our committee did. And they'll be launching a needs assessment for students and staff next fall. So we're excited about that. And then finally, the global learning and community partnerships. Again, Ms. Rapp, if you feel free.
Well, Jim, do you want to talk a little bit about Portrait of the Graduate?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So actually, I think Dr. Itchidge probably will speak a little bit about this later as well, but we we are very much underway with Portrait of the Graduate, and we'll be coming back, I believe, in early June with the draft of that for the committee.
Okay. And one of the next goals under this pillar was to connect students with local and global partnerships. And DHS has had some really interesting and pretty unique opportunities to do that. One of the first partnerships they have developed was with the Box Hill School in Surrey, England. This program was set to focus on William Mullins, who was Priscilla Alden's father and passenger on the Mayflower. And this is all tied to the 400th anniversary. Unfortunately, due to the lockdown in the UK, the students weren't able to actually work through this partnership, but there are plans. They hope to be able to do that next year. Additionally, the social studies department has continued their partnership with the Alden House. They've also developed a partnership with the Boston Jewish Film Festival, and they plan to host a film screening on May 25th at DHS.
And then, you know, with our homeschool communication, one of the areas that we're looking at is we tend to publish pretty long newsletters and and we had a really great discussion in our last school council meeting about different ways we can break that up and and move across multiple platforms similar to how Chase is doing it at Alden. So I'll be happy to answer questions from the committee about anything in our school.
Given the the attention you're all giving to social emotional learning and the adjustments you're expecting students to have to make next year. And as a result of the challenges from this year and remote learning. How, what are your plans for the guidance? Guidance counselors changing at all, or you see greater need in the guidance department going forward?
So I I think the answer is yes, right? So we have we have different needs as far as what our students need on a on a obviously emotional level, right? From a counseling perspective, we have those needs are are real and present. I think one of the, one of the things that we're going to do, be able to do when we shift to this new schedule next year is we by design have grouped our freshmen and sophomore. We will be grouping our freshmen and sophomore ASP periods to be kind of distributed throughout the day, but they're all going to be in three periods. And what that's going to be able to do is allow us with guidance and as, you know, principals and assistant principals to do more small class meetings of sixty to seventy kids and do more workshops during the day during ASP when it than we have before. One of our biggest issues with guidance has always been access. Access always came at the cost of class time, and that was a major reason for moving towards this eighth period and the schedule that was supposed to launch this year. So unfortunately, or I should say, you know, one of the challenges of this current model is that that ASP period is locked across both buildings since, and so we can still only get the same number of kids and guidance in that one period. But by distributing it across the entire building, we're going to be able to increase that access without having to take class time, which is huge for us. And it's huge for our our school just our our school psychologists. It'll be huge for our special education teachers. It'll be huge for our assistant principals. Everyone needs access to kids and not be able to do it at the expense of class time because that pressure is real. And we're also going to be able to to get and provide better, different and and more timely programming because we have better access to groups of students. And I hope I answered your question there.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to shout out to Kristin Rapp. Thank you for your eight years. I'll echo Jim, and it's been fun reading your tweets and your little you know, everything that you put out academic and education related. So thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Thank you.
I'd just like to say I'm really enjoying hearing from faculty members and parents as well as the principals around what's going on in the schools. I think it's a great kind of shift. So.
Okay. So with that, our next discussion item of the revisions to the 2021, 2022 student handbooks.
Yeah, so there's there's no presentation. Now you have in your packets and your folders all the changes to the hand, recommended changes to the handbooks. Some are some are just housekeeping and some are reflecting like an updated policy, like the ten oh nine policy, which the school committee adopted early this year. So we just figured if the school committee had any questions, the principals would be glad to answer them. But otherwise, you have it, you have the back, the backup. If that's okay.
Yeah. Did anybody, does anybody have any specific questions? I think it was fairly straightforward, but.
Well, I was just interested that in contrast to the other schools, the middle schools seem to have changed quite a lot of the I don't know if it's changed or or just advanced the language that usually sits kind of towards the beginning of the handbook around mission and vision. So I wondered if Mrs. McGuire would like to expand on that for a minute.
I'd be happy to. So that process also came out of you know, faculty input, some of our our students who have expressed some feelings of of wanting to be more explicit about our core values and our inclusive community as well as our school council. And so what we were working towards was including some additional language and some of that messaging as part of our handbook around that. So you'll notice, I I think, you know, I included all of those paragraphs in the beginning, but the the chunk of of edit is in that middle paragraph from the our community page, which is that we want DMS to be a positive place where all students feel safe and welcome. We expect students at DMS to show our commitment to our core values of inclusion and equity in our actions and words because we value a diverse community and the strength that brings us. You know, I I've shared in a few newsletters recently the project that some of my eighth graders brought to me, which is a an idea to put a banner on our main street that says we stand for. And those students asked our our student body to think about the things that they stand for and what we would want to express to our broader community about what we stand for. And we've built that out. And I think those things have kind of gone hand in hand in terms of the conversation we've had as a DMS community. And so that got reflected in our handbook process as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay. So then following the agenda, we have the next item is Dr. Antonucci's end of year goals report.
Yeah, let me just share my screen here. So so the committee is, you know, we've used the the same structure for goals reporting since since I've been here. We built this, I think, four years ago. And you have this report in your folder. We actually did a mid-year report. I forget the time, you know, a few, a few months back. Same model that the end of year report's just updated. So I'm not going to go through this entire report. What I'm going to do is just give a few highlights. And and before I do, I I just want to say this, as evidenced by the school improvement plan that you just saw, this was not just a year of COVID. Sometimes it felt like it was, but we really kept our foot on the gas throughout the year. Try to accomplish a lot of our goals are outlined in our strategic plan and our school improvement plans. And I'm actually really proud of the work that we've done this year and and I, you know, we had to respond to COVID, which is really just a hopefully a once in a career task. And if you ask any educator in the country to a person, they'll tell you this is by far the hardest year of of their career, no matter how long they've been in it. So I I actually am pretty, pretty happy overall with them, with the work, you know, all things considered. I do want to just try to briefly run through some highlights of our goals. We we list two professional professional practice goal, the teaching and learning goal, and then two district improvement goals typically in two district improvement goals typically in in our goals process. One of the things we did this year was really focus a lot on our systems in creating some systems enhancements to try to identify areas of inefficiency or redundancy. You know, some of the examples here, review personnel and human resources functions, onboarding, offboarding, employee contracts and the like, things like new student registration process, a whole, a whole bunch of different things. And I have to say, I really can't take credit for really most of what I'm talking about tonight. You know, my my entire goals are really the success, my success has depended on the work of many, many other people in the district. In this particular work, really, the the credit goes to Pat Dillon and and Katie Blake, and I gave this to you mid year, but we have an entire document that'll be shared online. You already have access to it. Of all the systems enhancements that we made throughout the year, and and it's it's quite an exhaustive list. And again, it runs the gamut from HR functions to curriculum instruction to our talent management process and the like student information systems. And I have to say, i- if we had done just this this year, I think it would have been an impressive year. But again, credit, credit is due to the really hard work of of Pat and Katie and and their staff. Beyond that, also in the professional practice goal, we looked at reorganizing our technology department. There's a lot going on in the technology department this year. One was that the town, after a couple of years study, Julie Julie and I participated in that study, was going to hire a chief technology officer. So we knew that was coming, and that happened. We participated in the search committee for that. Ultimately hired one of our own, Mike Woodford, to be the new CTO. But even prior to that, we had done some I guess downsizing, a little bit of rightsizing in that department last summer. We actually cut staff, but in my opinion, it actually enhanced the level of expertise in the department with the changes we made, and we also saved over forty thousand dollars in that budget line item. Now that the CTO is in place, we're also looking at reorganizing the entire data and technology department. I'm not going to share this, the the details of that tonight. But in effect, what's the big picture that's happening is that our current Director of Technology Cheryl Lewis will effectively effectively be responsible for instructional technology, right? More focused on teaching and learning, more focused on what's happening in the classrooms. And Mike Woodford, as Chief Technology Officer, will absorb the technical staff, and he'll be responsible for the supervision and evaluation of the technical staff. We have technical support specialists, a networked network administrator as well. We're also taking, we have a data manager, really critical role in any school department in the country, really. The data manager actually is going to be absorbed under Katie Blake, the Director of Finance position. So we just we shuffled the deck a little bit. We think it's going to be far more efficient, far more effective as relates to supervision, evaluation and day to day management. And again, we'll share some details of more details of that in the future, but that that's been all ongoing throughout the year, particularly the end of the year. The 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 primary student learning goal this year was related to COVID. And I mean, to state the obvious, you know, we really had to reinvent public education this year. We weren't alone, obviously. And I have to say, you know, it's all hindsight now, and it was a challenging year in many ways, but I'm actually really proud of the work we did, and it was it was like it was monumental. Going through just some of the highlights here, we obviously last, starting last summer, we had to develop, you know, comprehensive school reopening plans, hybrid, remote, in person. It was a hundred and ten page document, really well crafted and widely disseminated. But that was that was that was a major effort by our staff. And then, you know, all throughout, we're collaborating with Teachers Association to develop plans, procedures, develop our MOA because we had to make a lot of changes kind of to our day to day. We're overseeing planning and purchasing of of resources related to safety, PPE of the like. We spent one point two million dollars this year. And the work it took Katie and her team and Brian sharing his team to look at cleaning and disinfecting protocols and training all staff, you know, with these new procedures and methods. Again, I mean, this is work that I guess in normal times could have been a two or three year project. You know, we had to do it really over the summer and into the fall. And again, the credit goes, credit goes to their staff. We also had to develop safe, health and safety protocols to respond to COVID scenarios. And it's funny, it was kind of an esoteric exercise to me when we were developing these. We had never seen a COVID case before, right? And so we're developing all these protocols to plan how we were going to respond in the event of a positive case, or, you know, what we were doing on the bus and all these kind of very detailed things. And boy, you know, it didn't take long. I think it was the first weekend of the school year where we actually had to execute our plans. But that COVID response protocol document, which I believe was like thirty six pages long, that was a living and breathing document. We updated that virtually every month as we learned more about COVID and what was happening in the schools, but also with all the changes that were coming our way from the states and the Department of Education. So it's living, breathing document. I think we last updated this this week. I mean, quite quite literally. So that was something that kept us busy all year. Our professional development activities and, you know, credit to Danielle and and her her team. I mean, our our staff had a really robust set of professional development offerings this year, most of it focused on enhancing our our skills and our tools kind of for us to be successful in this in this new environment, right? Just hybrid, remote, synchronous asynchronous environment. And I I won't click on it, but the, actually, I will click on it because I think it's worth clicking on. But if you look at, and again, this will all be shared, you already have it, but it'll be shared with the community. It was in the winter. If you look at our offerings this year for professional development, and by the way, it wasn't just about COVID, it was about diversity, equity, inclusion. It was about phonics. It was about technology tools, as you know, right on down the line, ELA math. It was an incredible, incredibly robust set of PD offerings. And I'm really, I'm really proud of this. And again, the credit goes one hundred percent to Danielle and the principals in the instructional staff. But it shouldn't, it shouldn't go unnoticed that even in even in this year where our entire world got put upside down, that that we truly were able to enhance, I think, the quality of our our staff and the quality of their ability to deliver high quality instruction to our kids. The kids benefit from all this work. As it relates to communication, you know, there's been a lot of talk this year about communication, but if you look at it objectively, you know, I just want to point out between our principals, we alluded to a lot of this in our school improvement plan just happened, in our school improvement plan presentation is just now, but this is as of last week, actually. But if you consider what the school sent home and what the district sends home, and that's, that's me, JJ, that's how I label things in our internal system, we sent out of two hundred and two communications to families this year, everything from newsletters to just general news to community updates to COVID updates. And, you know, if you're a parent at Chandler, that means you're getting, you know, at least on average, about two communications per week, you know, from the school department. I think it's just, I think it's worth mentioning. What's happening here? In addition, you know, again, all a lot of topic of discussion, but an objective look at us seeking input from both families and staff, I've provided with you a list of surveys and forms really that were sent out by school and also by the district this year. And I think there are about over four dozen or about four dozen surveys that were sent out to families this year. And I just think it's important to say that you know, that that survey data, you know, there are thousands and thousands of data points that are read and analyzed by us, by our by our principals. And you know, every single one of them, you know, we didn't do it for kicks. We did it so we could get some data and feedback that really helped us inform our decision making process throughout the year. So again, an objective viewpoint of that, I I think, I think there was quite a quite a bit of communication, quite a bit of opportunity for for parent and staff input. And it's really important, especially this year as we're navigating COVID and changes to our learning models. It was very, very valuable information to gather and to analyze. And, you know, I appreciate the responses that we get from families because a lot of families took a lot of time to provide some really I guess thoughtful and kind of measured measured feedback. And then finally, I mean, that, you know, it was really challenging year. I don't want to minimize it. But I provided for you kind of just a retrospective of our of our timeline and kind of when we returned to school and when we returned all of our, all of our grade levels back. And, you know, it all started on September fourteenth. I I actually think we were the first district in the state to 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 return to school. I think we beat everybody by a day. There's a reason why we we had only taken nine days of the ten days that the state allowed for beginning of the year professional development. So we kind of get a little jump start on people. And we were in the hybrid model, and that's really important, I think, to remember. There are some districts that did not get back to school in person until this past Monday, May seventeenth. And we had students back in the building on on September fourteenth. And it's not, it wasn't an easy lift. And it certainly wasn't perfect, but it was impressive. And that hybrid model, and I think this is kind of some notes down here that I think are important to mention. We made a radical change to our grade six to twelve schedule so that our classes wouldn't rotate. And what that allowed is for students to at a minimum be in school at least two days a week. Had we kept our rotating schedule, it'd be very likely that students might only meet in person one time a week. And some of our neighboring towns did that. And we didn't, you know, and we worked with our union to make make this happen. And I I don't want to minimize the effort that took and also how important that was. So at a minimum, our students were in school two days per week from day one, which is pretty impressive. Also impressive, I think, is that from day one, our students in grade six to twelve had synchronous and asynchronous opportunities every single day. When they were at home, they were able to access live stream classes. And so not that we didn't, you know, miss miss some opportunities, but the kids really did miss a beat. Every single day, they had access to all their classes. Again, some of our neighboring districts, they didn't live stream any anything until, you know, February, March, April. I mean, I can, I can I can touch some of these towns. So we did that from day one. And again, that was, you know, credit to our teachers, credit to our staff for making that happen. And also our Duckberry students who chose to be in cohort C, which ended up being a very successful program. They were accessing Duckberry curriculum, they were accessing Duckberry teachers. And many, many districts in the Commonwealth, you know, use third party providers, and it did not go well. So even from the beginning, even though we're in hybrid, I think, I think it was a pretty successful return. And then we started shifting away from hybrid, we got our most significant at risk and high needs, high needs kids back day one. I meant to say that, right? So we had students that we identified as our most significant and at risk students, they were in our building on day one. We transitioned on January fourth to bring all of our high need students back, any student on an IEP five oh four English as English language learners, they were back on January first, January fourth. There was never a requirement up until today from the state to make that happen. Right? So that wasn't a requirement to bring them back in person. And again, some of those students didn't return to districts until this past Monday. Our kids were back on January fourth. And then right on down the line, you know, grades K and two came back on February first, three to five. And then grades, you know, six to twelve came back on April fifth. We beat every single benchmark. We blew away every single benchmark by months. And again, I don't want to suggest it was perfect. I'm not trying to say that, but it was a big, big lift to even open the doors this year. And for us to be able to get the the kind of quality of instruction from day one, and then for able to throughout the year trickle trickle more students into the into the building. It felt more and more normal as the year went on. And, you know, again, it was challenging, but I I don't think we should ignore kind of the reality of what Duck Spray was able to pull off. It took a lot of collaboration, a lot of planning and really a lot of partnership, partnerships with with the union and the community and and all of our teachers' hard work. So credit, you know, really credit goes to to the staff. And then just kind of moving, moving on final COVID slide. We talked about the fact that we had a hundred and ten page planning document and COVID response protocol and the PP purchase. But very quietly, this is as of last week, we had over two hundred and seventy positive COVID cases in the district this year. So obviously you can do the math, that's well, well more than one, one, one case a day. And some weeks it was thirty. But we had over two thousand students quarantined, students and staff. And I can't express to you how challenging that was for our staff. And there were times where we we weren't sure that we were going to be able to adequately staff the building or have enough students to keep it rolling, and we kept it rolling. Okay, we were able to keep moving forward all year. And the last bullet is the most important. We didn't close down a single day. I I I would challenge you to find a district that didn't close down a single day. We almost did, by the way. I mean, I remember a meeting where we were just about ready to pull the plug, you know, the week after Christmas break, I went to break. But look at these numbers. I mean, it's staggering. Twenty two hundred students and staff quarantined, and that all happened behind the scenes. And so I just thought it was important to kind of bring to light at this time of the year. Again, it's I don't want to call it nostalgic because it really wasn't that fun. Usually nostalgia is fun, but it's certainly retrospective and I think important to important to highlight. Moving on from COVID, you know, again, we alluded to a lot of in the in the student improvement plans, but we we tackled a lot of our goals in our strategic plan. We kept on moving forward. Part of it, and you know, some of my check marks here, we we continue to place a real high priority on culture building, maintain maintaining positive morale during some challenging times. I listed a lot of staff activities, kind of morale boosting and culture building activities that we did. And, you know, that's not easy, and I can't say that was perfect either, but we placed a high priority on it. And we need to make sure that not only our students, social motion, well being is attended to, but our staff as well. And that's something that we're going to continue well into the future. We talked about Oregon Gillingham, hugely successful start and a, and a, you know, kudos to the district and kudos to the town for funding this. This is, this is amazing, and our kids are going to be better served for it in the future. So we rolled out kind of our first cohort of Oregon Gillingham trainers, and we talked about that earlier. And we also talked about the new cooperative learning course. Credit here goes to Danielle and also Matt Files at the high school. But we have a brand new course in our program of studies that really has an eye towards creating a pathway for students to college, to college and career. We have eleven students participating in the class and several students completing internships with local partners. It would have been more, obviously, if we weren't in 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 COVID times, we weren't able to accommodate all the requests. But it's really exciting work, and this thing's going to grow and grow, and it needs to. And I'm really excited about that work. You know, career and technical education, even though we're kind of a traditional college preparatory high school, we need to shine a spotlight on the need to provide more career and technical education for 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 many students who wants to access it as possible. As part of that course, we also were able to purchase into a program called the Core Learning Exchange. And it's a lot of what they call micro credentialing units and units that are geared towards mass, you know, mastery of certain topics. And we list here this topics like healthcare, finance, and several of the trade. So it's just kind of an add on to the program, but it'll allow again, kind of more skill development. And again, another step towards the pathway towards college, college and most importantly, career, career readiness. And then finally, we did talk about Portrait of a Graduate. I think the highlight of the Portrait of a Graduate process was that we had incredible stakeholder representation in this planning. We had two really well attended stakeholder focus groups in the winter and in January and February. I think we had about thirty or forty attendees from the community, from our staff, we had students, we had teachers, the school committee members, some of you were there. the school committee members, some of you were there. And the feedback and the input that we received in that in those focus groups really was incredibly helpful. And again, help formed a lot of will ultimately turn into a really kind of impressive portrait for graduate presentation and product. We did partner with a consultant to help us do this work. He's one of the best, Tony Bent. He's a longtime superintendent, now retired. And he was an incredible facilitator, partnered with us all year to do this work. And the final piece is that we will be presenting at the June 9 school committee meeting. We'll produce a final document over the summer and we'll begin disseminating that probably, you know, probably in the fall. So anyway, that is it sort of for the update. I'd be glad to answer any questions. But you know, just to reiterate, a lot of work happens every year, but a lot of work happened this year. And I think it's even more. I don't know. I don't know if it presses the word, but maybe it's just amazing that it did because sometimes it felt like we were just, we were just in 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 COVID in the pandemic world, but a lot got done. We have a great leadership team. We have a great faculty and staff. We have a great bunch of kids. And I think, you know, if I could summarize it in one line, we kept the district moving forward this year. And that's important. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions or expand on anything, but you have all the backup and that's that.
Thank you, Dr. Anshinuchi. I I'm just going to share my reaction when I saw all of this. And, you know, having fall, you know, heard the improvement plans tonight and all of this, I I'm surprised, I'm amazed, to be honest. I mean, I think the past year has been so difficult for everybody. And all the uncertainty that we've been navigating. I had no idea a lot of this work was getting done, right? I mean, the Portrait of a Graduate, I think I heard references to it once or twice. I didn't know the level of work that was going into it. I actually didn't know the co-op program had taken off. I remember talking about it, I think, last year, right? But every, all of our meetings have been so focused on the emergency of the pandemic. And so I'm just, I mean, I'm I'm grateful for you and your your team, the broader team, for all the work that's been going on in addition to managing global pandemic. So I I just that that's kind of just my, you know, personal reaction to all of this. And then I also just share in terms of the COVID react that that I had the opportunity to to join the South Shore the school committee co-op, right, where the chairs meet. And I can just say, you know, it's anecdotal, but that they all reacted. They said that Duxbury's reaction to the pandemic. Basically, they that all this other school committees, like we were embarrassed because you guys, your return was so exemplary. And this was unprompted. When I introduced myself as the new chair and I'm joining the group and thank you. And they said, oh, you guys put us to shame. And that was so I just, I just kind of had to share that from like the, you know, outside of Duxbury perspective. Again, acknowledging as you did, Dr. Anshinuchi, that this has been a hard year. Nothing has been perfect, a lot of stumbling, trying to figure out what the best is. But I think we really have to acknowledge the context of the last year and and all the work that's gone into to it. So with that, I want to open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
I just want to say that, yeah, echo you, Shannon. And you know, having a middle schooler and a high schooler or senior in high school, and I've said it before, Jim, his staff, the teachers, just the work that went on to make their year as seamless as possible and to continue to learn and to have the two days a week and then have the availability of the teachers and you know, and in middle school, we all know is those are some tough transitional years. And so I noticed with the communications, the middle, out of all the schools, the middle school put out like 40% or 24.5% of the communication. It was more than the other buildings. So just kudo, you know, Sarah and your staff. And I mean, this has just been unprecedented, as we've said, and the work that continued and the work that was added and and everything that's been completed and accomplished is impressive. So thank you.
Can I just, can I just thank you very much? And Sarah, I guess we'll get some kind of prize for for having the most. Not that it's a competition, but I thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Shannon. I just want to mention one thing I neglected to say when I was talking about my faculty and staff. I do want to shout out one particular group that really earned their keep this year, and that was our school nurses. I I can't express to you the value they added, how much value they added to to the school year. They worked. They were working seven days a week, you know, COVID didn't take a break on the weekends. And so a lot of our contract tracing work and a lot of our identification of positive cases that happened on Saturdays and Sundays, and they they just hustled. And they were professional, and they they really helped carry, you know, carry the ball this year. So I I should have pointed them out especially, but I just, I wanted to mention that while I was to the floor.
Well, I feel like I've talked a lot already, but I I you kept using the word impressive. And I thought that that was interesting because from a an administrator standpoint, all the information you shared is indeed impressive. And so I can see why you chose that word. But but coming from looking from the outside in, I would have said that it's valuable. I would have chosen a different word. And the reason why is that not being a school administrator, I don't know all the logistics and the effort and the coordination that goes on to kind of achieve all the stuff that you guys have achieved this year. All I can see is that, as you say, there are no missed school days. There was no flip flopping from remote to hybrid, back to remote, whatever. But the word valuable to me is what what I settle on because it's valuable for our students that there was consistency in the delivery of the whatever the learning model was, whether it was hybrid, whether certain grades were back in school four days a week or five days a week or whatever. There was a kind of single direction in which we were moving throughout the year without, I'm I'm sure in the background, the quarantining caused a lot of anxiety, but you know, it it was pretty smooth and and a single trajectory. And I think that consistency and direction was valuable for the educational well being of our students, that, you know, transitions are hard for everybody. But you kind of kept things kept the transitions to a minimum and to those that were necessary. And I think that that I I appreciate that aspect of all the things you've talked about.
Any questions about the information presented? Any other discussion? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So let's take a look at the agenda, see where we are. So now we're at couple comments from the public. So we welcome comments and just ask that we limit your remarks to two minutes and refrain from airing grievances with individual members of the school community. Take a look and see if anybody is raising their hands. We got a couple. Bring over Rachel Stadler.
Let's see.
Thank you so much. I just want to say in all of the groups we're acknowledging tonight that I want to acknowledge the students. From the moment we started school, there were so many times where I thought, you know, I don't know if we're going to get through this. And yet the kids came in every day, just as they always do, thrilled to be learning new things, to be creating, to be sharing ideas. And they're who they're the people who really got me through this. I'm amazed, and I'm not unique. I'm amazed at the number of letters, emails I've gotten from families saying this was such a pivotal year for my child. They are, they've had one of the best years so far. And I get it, it's fourth grade. There haven't been that many years. But to see that in a year like this, and I'm not alone in getting those emails, makes me feel so so much pride for the people I work with, for the families, for sticking this out, and especially for these resilient students. I we went over, you know, in history, I remember in fourth grade, I was memorizing the states and capitals. Our students in the fourth grade are analyzing primary sources. One of those from my class this year was looking at the Dust Bowl. And we would think, how on earth? Looking at these photos, how on earth did the people get through this time period? And I said, guys, that's you right now. You are more resilient. I think Mr. Picard, I believe it was, who spoke for Chandler, he had the the best comments of the night for me. I think this is going to be one of the great generations. I am just so in love with the children that we get to work with, and I know I'm not alone in saying it. I I suggest every one of us ask the children in our families at and in school to write a letter to themselves about this experience, because one day they're going to be the sources, the primary sources that future generations are looking at and saying, how on earth did they get through it? I just want to say thank you to everybody for helping all of us get through this year, to our families for being so supportive, to our students for being just rock stars every day. And I can't tell you the pride that I feel for the people I work with. So thank you for letting me speak. And hopefully next year is completely different. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. And and thank you for making me cry. Seriously. Okay.
That's it.
Any more, any more hands, any more comments from the public? Okay, all right, going back to the agenda. Let's see where we are now. We have, oh, we have a vote to approve the 2021, 2022 student handbooks. Should we do this school by school so that we give? I mean, we've all had a chance for questions. I don't know if we want to give one final. We'll go school by school. Have a motion for the Chandler student handbook for 2021, 2022.
Motion to approve Chandler handbook.
Oh, Julia, can you unmute?
All right, I move to approve the Chandler student handbook for 2122.
Kelly, you want a second? Okay. And any comments or questions before we vote? Okay, Julia?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
And Shannon, hi. Okay, I have a motion for the Alden handbook approval, please.
Motion to approve the Alden handbook, 2021, 22.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, Julia?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Shannon, hi. Now we're on to the middle school, 2021, 2022 handbook.
Motion to approve the middle school handbook, 2122.
Second.
Comments or discussion? Julia?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Shannon, hi. And motion for the approval of the high school handbook, please.
I move we approve the high school handbook, 2122.
Second.
Any comments or questions, discussion? Julia?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Shannon, hi. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a suggestion that we maybe we should adopt the select boards way of doing the votes. They just automatically go through it without calling everyone's name. So maybe we can talk about that the next meeting. Okay, so now I think we are moving to adjourn into the executive session. Did I miss anything? Or is that our next item? Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? And we will not be returning to public session after after that. So this is right?
Yeah.
For the public session.
You should probably read the
the statement for executive session. School committee will be going into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to contract negotiations with the assistant superintendent, which would have a detrimental detrimental effect on the position of the governing body of the discussion or an open session. The committee will not return to open session. And John, do we have a separate?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna send I'm gonna send you a link in an email as soon as we close the the webinar. So just check your email and then join during that executive session.
We will close down the Zoom session and open up a new one.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, somebody like to move for to adjourn to executive session, please.
I move we adjoint this public meeting and go into executive session.
Julia?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Shannon, hi. Okay. Good night, everyone.
Principals, thank you. My staff can go home.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.